City of Rockaway Beach City Council meeting on Wednesday, June 11th, 2025 at 6:00 PM will come to order. The council and staff want our business meetings to be a safe place for all to attend and share their opinions, a place of common courtesy and civility. As such, we request all people in attendance, respect those attending, and the opinions of those with whom you may disagree during meetings, prior to meetings, during breaks, and after meetings. This will enable our community to establish an environment wherein all issues and opinions may be fairly considered and decisions, though sometimes difficult, will be made in a spirit of mutual respect for all community members, no matter our differences. Please silence your cell phones and let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance between the United States of America. And as soon as we recover from our recent stance, one nation under God, need this book with liberty and justice for all.
Let's record who is in attendance, Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councilor Conruff.
Yes.
Councilor Martine.
Yes.
Councilor McGinnis.
Yes.
And Mayor McNeely is present. The Consent Agenda is a tool used to streamline meeting procedures by collecting routine, non-controversial items into a group whereby all are passed with a single motion and vote. You have before you the Consent Agenda on the approval of the May 14th, 2025, regular meeting minutes, approval of the May 14th, 2025 workshop minutes, and review of financial reports. The minutes of the previous meetings and financial reports were distributed beforehand. Does council wish to remove any of these items from the Consent Agenda to be discussed individually during Agenda Item 11? Items removed from Consent Agenda. If there are no items for removal, are there any clarifying questions pertaining to the documents in the Consent Agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda?
I'm moved to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second?
I second the motion.
It is moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. Let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councilor Conruff.
Yes.
Councilor Martine.
Yes.
Councilor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. We have no presentations, guests, or announcements, so we move on to staff reports.
Yes.
The Chair recognizes Fire Chief Todd Hesse to report for the Fire Department.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and City Manager of Rockaway Beach. You have before you the Fire Department Council Report for May of 2025. Start with the Run Report. You notice we're starting to pick up speed and start to get into those dreaded summer months, but 83 different calls and trainings were in the month of May, which is 2.7 per day average. 911 calls, we had 42. Medical still leading the way, but did have six fire alarms, three structured fires, two water rescues, and four motor vehicle crashes. Trainings, kept working on search and rescue. Our EMT class is almost complete. In fact, they're doing, they're over there sweating right now. They're doing their final exam, written exam, so they're sweating bullets. We also did some fire attack drills, trying to get that firefighter one class completed before we get too deep into summer, because there's a lot of practical exercise. And we practiced splinting for those that fall down and break bones for these summer months. Non-emergent calls were 27. We were on the beach quite a bit. Definitely seen that picking up 14 times, couple of public assists, couple of lift assists. You notice the burn complaints are starting to come up, six for the month. So we're getting there into that season too. Year-to-date, just basically 911 calls are the biggest trend that's up. And if you look from like 21 to 25, we're up over 60 calls for this time of year. I did a little look back at last year, and last year, we didn't run our 200th 911 call until the 11th of July, and we ran it in May. So we're definitely 50, 60 calls above where we normally are. This month, we're kind of working on honing in our summer skills. We're going to do our Wildland firefighting classes. And EMT class, I noted again, because we're completing the EMT basic class. And June 25th, we're starting our EMT advanced class. So there's almost no rest for some, which is a big step for the county and our department to get some advanced EMTs certified. But I can say, the beach, you still see the numbers pretty low on the beach. We did have the one notable water rescue. We did have a couple of young adults get pulled out in a riptide about a week and a half ago. We were able to make a successful rescue out of that, which is a good thing. I doubt they'll ever go back in the water again. They were from Nevada. They don't have a lot of oceanfront property there. And they shared with me that they would never go back in that ocean. They couldn't believe the power that the ocean possessed. So, and I'm sure some people have heard that before. So, sorry. So volunteers are still needed for our emergency management program. If anybody's interested, we're still campaigning to try to bring folks in. Our June Preparedness Meeting last week was on wildfire safety. You happened to miss it. It was recorded and is on our website under the Preparedness tab, so you can look at it. CERT training is coming up, their quarterly training is next week, and they're going to be doing CPR in the first aid. And like I say, we're just getting ready for the summer. Spent a lot of time out there getting trained, prepared, make sure our equipment's good to go. A couple of notes that weren't on the page, but I thought were important. Fourth of July is coming up. We'll be actively participating in the parade and the fireworks and the... We will have shirt sales. I just approved the shirt design today with the... So I'm looking forward to getting that out there. If you need the new addition, it'll be available in about a month. Memorial Day, we definitely saw an increase in visitors and our response. We had a pretty busy weekend. I think we had 10 or 11 calls over the weekend. EMT class, we got a burn ban. So something that people have been asking about is when can I burn my brush and my trash and my yard debris? You can still do that, it's still open. We asked to use caution on our dry and windy days. But it looks like, what we'll discuss and give you the absolute date, but it looks like July 1st will be the end of this burn season. Just use caution at any time when you burn. Fire season's definitely upon us. I had a notification this afternoon, if anybody's been following the fire in the dowels. It grew in size and so I guess both ways of ID4 closed, it did go to a complaint. So we're sending, we're not personally sending resources, but the state is sending resources that way. And that's like, I believe, the earliest by about a month that we've ever had something like this. So conditions are dried, use caution. And I think that's what I have for you. Okay, I think, oh, I do have one more thing. I have some emergency assistance forms. But one of the takeaways we had from the Great Shakeout Event was folks or citizens in our community that had or needed help getting to an evacuation site or needed help. I put a fill-in form on our website, and then I'll have some of these copies upstairs if you want to just fill it out with a pen or pencil. And we'll keep a file of anybody that might need assistance in the event of a natural or man-made disaster. And with that, I will answer any questions. Oh, yeah, yeah, actually, I'll show a few slides, and then we can ask some questions. I'm getting kind of excited about this. This is the latest picture from last week of the ladder truck. That is the last announcement I have, is I am scheduling my flight to go back and do the final inspection on this. It looks like the 29th of June, I'll be in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Look at this. So go ahead and we'll flip through a couple of pictures here. But this is before we painted the passenger side. We just kind of, yeah. So I gave you each side of it before it was painted, and we can go to the next picture. Now we got paint on it, and you can see the progression. We got one more here with some doors on it. So we're definitely making progress. We're getting close to that final, really excited moment to get this done. So I couldn't just show this, I had to show that we have been actually training. We don't just talk about it, we actually get out there. This was last week. We went up to Kitty Lake, and we put some water out, practiced our hose and nozzles. Next one. Another picture, I liked that, I thought it was a pretty cool picture. And then the last one, Sparky is getting ready, because it's the summer months, and we like to get out on the wayside wherever we can. So if you want, come the 4th of July and visit with Sparky. And without answering any questions. Thank you, Barca.
I noticed he had down six fire alarms. One building?
No, they were scattered.
Really?
Haven't been to that one building very often at all, but now we will, because I said that. But we haven't already been to that, the one that had issues.
When I saw that, I thought, because the radios used to go off all the time, and everybody stayed at the station till I drove up there, then I get on the radio and say, "Don't worry, just go back."
And that's kind of, they were all spread out through town. And I'm not sure what the actual cause was, whether the weather changed, the little sensors were reading. One was, somebody was walking by a house and heard the alarm inside the house, and the people are cooking dinner, had burned their toast or whatever they'd burned, and we're surprised when the Fire Department showed up. Knocked on their door, they're like, "What are you doing here?" Well, somebody said your alarm was going on. And they laughed, they got a good laugh out of it. And that's, at the end of the day, we'll take that.
Better you show up than not show up.
I would be, exactly. And yeah, we get that all the time, right?
Go ahead, Councilor Conruff.
Why no stickers to kids?
Oh, we have, we have them, just haven't seen a lot of kids out on the beach that...
Oh, okay.
Oh, no, we have, we have.
Been watching it for the last couple of months, and it's always zero. And I'm like, oh, wait.
As we get out there more in the next couple of weeks, you'll start seeing, the number increase. We did get some tours to some kids today, so it's, we're getting there.
I have a couple. One, when the fire truck arrives, are we going to have a push-in ceremony?
Well, I think that would be a great idea. Yeah, yeah, we have some community members that are already kind of putting the framework to that together. It should take us about a month from when we receive it to we have it in service, and we'll have that ceremony. So we should have a pretty good timeframe to get ready. But yeah, I'm really excited, we'll go through the formal, put it in service, looking forward to that day.
And my other one is, you mentioned more need for more volunteers and CERT.
Yes.
Is there another Fall CERT class?
As soon as we get enough people involved again, because also, we're doing more work with our Emergency Volunteer Corps in the Haylen Bay and some of the other groups that I see, whenever those groups all collectively get enough people together, yes, we'll absolutely put another one on.
Chief Hesse.
Yes.
Thank you for including me and my wife in your Fire Department celebration. We enjoyed it very much. And at that celebration, you acknowledged some people who had had extensive periods of service with a plaque, and would you mind talking about that and encouraging those people, and what's going to happen with the plaque?
Can absolutely do that tonight. So we took the opportunity to do our annual dinner, and at our annual dinner, we honored four members of the Fire Department that are past members now. However, they spent at least 25 years of public service. And we noted, Barry Love, the one you called out, very memorable, 62 years of service. We noted Councilor Tom Martine for his 25 years of service. Assistant Chief Sean Vincent for his 38, 38 years of service. And Pat Olson for his 30 years of service. So collectively, yeah. And we took a short statement from each of them, of what their memories were, what they thought of the department, all good responses, by the way. And took a picture of them, and they'll be hanging up on the wall of our honorary members. I think that's a really important, and like I said at that dinner, and I'll say it today, those members and those folks that spent the years ahead of us have given us what we have today and the opportunities we have today. So they were very much appreciated, and thank you for reminding me to bring that up.
Thank you for bringing that, it was a wonderful celebration.
Anyway, I know you have a big agenda tonight, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, the Chair recognizes Deputy Kevin Grogan to report for the Rockaway Beach Patrol. Come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So the month of May showed a slight decrease in criminal cases in Rockaway Beach, which is positive note, that allowed us to get freed up and maintain regular patrols and traffic enforcement. We have also been working quite heavily with the city staff to get some city ordinances under control and violations as well. Memorial Day weekend brought a large number of people to town, but overall, it was fairly quiet from law enforcement perspective, which is also nice. Some notable calls for service. There was a report of a vehicle break-in in the North Pacific Street area. A dispute between neighbors was called in as a potential harassment. A disturbance was reported to local business. After the investigation was concluded, it was no criminal charges being filed. An attendant, Bert Lee, was attempting to local business. When the investigation concluded there, the matter was handled civilly. A vehicle was reported stolen from a local business and was located the following day. Owner was contacted, the vehicle was returned. A fake $100 bill was also reported at a local business. We just want to make sure you know it's busy, take the proper timing channels to run those through the processes that each businesses has. And then we just want to thank everybody in the community again for calling in. Whatever you see, it's very important to see something, say something. Call the non-emergency line if it's not an emergency, 503-815-1911. And one last big major note. I'm no longer going to be driving my big white Rockaway truck, so I will be in a smaller Ford Explorer. It's more of a gray color, so I'm not going anywhere, I'll create a different vehicle. So I'm still around, just, if you see that thing, it's a lot quieter, it's a lot smaller, so I can hide in place. You'll look out, and that, doing pretty good, summer's on the way. And we really appreciate everything that the community has done, calling and helping us out. So I will take any questions with you.
Well, this is a quick...
Councilor Conruff, did you have a question?
Probably the second question. Can you go?
So for the last few months, we've been hearing we're getting a third deputy in June and a fourth in July.
So tentatively, we've got our deputy that we're going to swap out, back to light duty, I believe, next week. Thanks. Once he gets off light duty, we'll get the third, and the fourth one is still tentatively by July 1st.
Good news.
Yeah.
Going to be needed for the summer.
That was a question I was going to ask.
Yeah. And I think all of us wanted to ask that question, because we've noticed how much busier on the weekends Rockaway is this year compared to this early and previous summers. And I think a lot of it has to do with how hot Portland is and people are coming over.
And the bus services, we're getting a lot of people, you know.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah. We get a lot of people every weekend, and it nearly triples almost every weekend, pretty much as soon as spring break hits, so.
We don't want to, you know, we don't want to like burn you out. So having more help would be good.
It makes our day go by a lot faster if we're not ready to, we're out there on the streets. So it's our job, we love doing that, so.
Well, the fireworks have already started last night.
Well, and I'll just say, I'm glad you're not going away. I'm glad you're going to continue to patrol the streets.
It's just neutral.
For street, yeah. And congratulations, I guess, on the new vehicle.
I've had that truck since I started with the sheriff's office. It was a bittersweet moment, but it was done.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. The Chair recognizes Public Works Superintendent Dan Emerson to report for Public Works.
Right, thank you, Mayor, to the Council, to the Manager, Shepherd. All right, we're going to start with water treatment and distribution. We had four water leaks with one that stood out. It was staff repaired a two-inch water poly in Adana that was entangled in roots. The others were service leaks. We had approximately 70 re-reads and 15 work orders for various reasons. Lots of them, you know, mostly re-reads and water turn-ons and turn-ons. Locates with some coordination, staff located water lines along Pacific Street, preparation for the upcoming construction between North Third and North Ninth. We performed annual creek maintenance with ODF and W at the water treatment plant, moving down to wastewater treatment collections. Public Works focused on preparation for upcoming improvements. So all lift stations and some sewer lines were cleaned by Zalal. Sewer lines on North Pacific from North Fourth to Northwest 11th were cleaned, and an unplugged line between Ninth and Tenth. We used the jet rotor and little help with the fire truck. And a big thanks to Bay City Public Works for their help inspecting the North Pacific sewer lines in preparation for this project. With their use of their camera truck and our staff, we were able to accurately locate sewer stubs. This is an important step for completing the project. The utility vault at Lake Lidle Park was vacuumed and cleaned, so Public Works kindly asked that no trash is put in those toilets. Roads, parks, and facilities, crew remains busy throughout the city on various roads, facilities, improvements, and preparation for increased summer traffic. So paving and repairs, valve cans cut and raised on Lockington Street ahead of county paving projects. And staff laid down approximately five tons near a asphalt on 647 North Miller, Lake Lidle Estates, North Fifth and Pacific, and South Sixth, Southwest Sixth, in front of the Blue Octopus. Staffs dragged the boardwalk trail, parking lot, and added security signs along with extra cameras. Facility maintenance, Public Works is getting the city hall's doors evaluated by a locksmith, and the fire alarm testing at the city hall along with fire extinguishers has been completed. Some slurry seal was done. Public Works recently completed roadway maintenance as part of our capital improvement plan to extend the street's longevity. This marks the first time the city has implemented this slurry seal technique, an important treatment designed to preserve and protect existing pavement. This is not a full repave. So in preparation, staff did the prep work and followed by slurry seal application on May 21st and 22nd. It was North Miller between 13th and 19th that was done, North Third between Dolphin and Falcon, South Anchor between South Third and South Fifth. The slurry seal approach offers a cost-effective solution for extending the life of our streets. I'm seeking community feedback to evaluate the success of this method. And if it meets expectations, we may extend in future projects spanning. Parks and trails, so park mowing, right-of-way mowing, brush cutting is being conducted around town, including from South Third to North Third, preparation for summer. The water fountain at the boardwalk is now working properly. Upcoming projects. As part of the South Coral Street stormwater study, the next phase of improvement work was set to begin on January 2nd, sorry, June 2nd. This phase included ditch improvements along Beacon and South Second Avenue, partnered with JM Excavation to complete this drainage project. And as part of the work, proper advance notices were delivered to affected residents to minimize inconvenience. That work was now done, works great. And at that, do I have any questions?
I understand that the benches are ready to be installed along the boardwalk? Maybe not?
Yes, yes. Yes, we have two of them to be installed, and we're prepping for that tomorrow.
Oh, excellent. I still walk it almost every day, and I've noticed it's not just older people who need to take a break, but I see a lot of families with really young children, and the children are like, "How much father is it?", you know? And the parents would like a place to sit down and rest with their children.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that. And thank Bill Hassel also for his advocacy of it.
Yeah, many people wanted benches there for years, and it's finally getting pushed forward, so. Good.
I wanted to thank you for the second street in Coral. I saw you putting in the big, worst. So that's really going to help that water problem that we have there. So, thank you for getting that done.
And this, I don't know if this is you or if this is Luke, but there's been a lot of talk about the Lake Lidle project, and I know that that's like a multi... There's a lot that goes into that, but do we have any type of like fall of 2020, like any type of anything for the Lake Lidle project?
That's most likely a Luke, or probably Mary question. I usually get involved when it's time to do the work.
Got it, okay.
Stuff in the ground, so.
There's just been a lot of talk in social media and the community and stuff, and so I thought...
Exciting.
Yeah. The lake has been extremely busy, so I know it's a much anticipated.
Yeah. And well, there's little bits of work we've done. We've had, Dan got us a sign we put in there.
Yeah.
That was great. We've done some bathroom work and signage to keep vehicles from left there, but there is extra work being done by Mary in the back.
I will, I'll send her an email, but yeah.
I think one of the things that people are asking about is the cleaning of the mill foil in the lake. And I just want to point out, we don't own the lake, and so there's multi-governmental jurisdictions that we have to work with and work through, but we're aware of it, and there is a plan.
I'll just add a little bit to the Lake Lidle project, and I'm talking about the work out of the water in the parking lot, the restrooms, bringing utilities in. So at least six months ago, maybe even more than that, this OPRD noticed that we would be awarded grant funding, but there's a very long review process that we're still in. Probably it might be over in August, but once that happens, we'll get the official award, and then work can begin, and it should go, it should go really fast. We're ready to, we're ready to get started and get that project out the bid. So it could be something that happens, that we see construction fall in winter and open in time for next spring or summer. It's just a matter of waiting for the funds to be available and get that notice received from the state.
Yeah, I just, there was kind of a lot of busy work around it when it was, the project was first announced, and then nobody has said anything. And I think with the lake starting to pick up popularity, people are talking about it again, and they're like, "Well, the city's not doing anything", but it's a hurry-up-and-wait moment. So just if we could, just put it out there, like, oh, it's just, tomorrow.
And Mary can chime if she wishes, but she told me today that they're going to increase the award amount, because it's been so long. So we can basically do the project at today's dollars versus what we requested a year ago.
That's not all. You tell Mary, go.
Yeah.
That's huge. Any other questions for Superintendent Duncan? All right, Dan, thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, the floor is yours, City Manager Shepherd.
All right.
On the city.
All right, very nice. So let's go over what's going on with the agenda tonight. Let's see here, as soon as we get it up. And after, after I go over tonight's agenda, I've got some, I've got some photos to show you. Some of Public Works projects they've been working on. All right, very nice. So we have two public hearings tonight. We'll schedule to do two public hearings. The first public hearing on ordinance is 2025-05 and 2025-06. And these are changes to our zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan related to flood hazard overlay, flood hazard overlay zones. You guys might know this better as the FEMA BIOP. These are changes that would restrict development in our floodplains. And as has been the history with this over the years, this whole thing is now back in the courts, and so our attorneys have recommended that we wait, that the council do not take action tonight, instead continue the hearing to a date certain, which we've chosen to be August 20th, 2025. Where it's in the courts right now, the judge issued a 60-day stay, and so there could be changes to the requirements, to the changes we need to make to these amendments. So it's in our best interest to wait until we let the court case play out again. So... And then we have a second public hearing tonight for three ordinances, 2025-4, 5, and 6. And these are updating the zoning code, subdivision code, and comprehensive plan, all related to middle housing. So duplexes, triplexes, townhouses, cottage clusters. These changes will allow those to be built in our residential zones. This is something that is mandated by the state of Oregon through Senate Bill 406. And they've given us a deadline of the end of this month to get these adopted. And while there have been mandated changes in general... And while they have been mandated changes, in general, the public's response has been positive. We had a town hall in February, the planning commissions held several meetings, we workshop this with the council earlier tonight. And so hopefully with this adoption, this will be a positive step to maybe putting a dent in some of the housing shortages that we have in town here. But anyway, so tonight we will hold a public hearing, council can consider first and second reading and adoption, and these will go into effect, these changes, July 14th. And I believe we have at least three or four property owners who have some, some plans in mind to get, get some needed built as soon as these changes take effect. All right, then we've got six resolutions tonight. I'll go through these and then, and then show you some of the, some of the slurry seal Dan, Dan, Dan and his group have up to. So Resolution 2025-30 to reappoint some planning commission members. The position, the terms for position three and seven expire at the end of the month, and Penny Cole and Lydia Hest, the current members filling those positions. They've only recently been appointed, and they are willing to continue to serve, so it makes sense to go for a reappointment for those two positions on the planning commission. And then we've got Resolution 2035-31. So this is, this is to approve the new collective bargaining agreement between the city of Rockaway Beach and its union employees. It establishes wages, hours, conditions of employment, et cetera. So it's a new four-year agreement, it'll go through June 30th, 2029. And there's a red line in the workshop packet, there's a copy of this in our council meeting packet if anybody's interested. But it's a good, it's a good fair deal for our employees, and, and as I always like to say, we have the hardest-working city employees anywhere that I'm aware of, so I'm more than happy to give them a, give them a nice fair deal for the services they provide our community. All right, and Resolution 2025-32, this is kind of an exciting one. It approves facade grant applications. And so all of these, these, this grant program is funded through the city's transient lodging tax revenue, and it goes towards making our commercial buildings more attractive and more accessible to encourage economic development. And the word's out, last year, I think we received three applications, this year there was 13, so we had $321,000 in requested funding. And earlier today, earlier tonight, the council reached a consensus to award to nine of those, and also the remaining four, though, staff will reach out to those applicants. We think there's a chance we could work with them to get their, get their applications in compliance, and we'll bring those back and see if the council wants to consider those for approval as well. So this is, this is a great program. I don't know any other city who's putting this much money back into its business community, and I think it's wonderful, and I think, I think with this many applications, we should start to see some real impacts to our downtown, positive impacts. All right, and Resolution 2025-33 establishes the Forest Stewardship Plan Development Advisory Committee. So recently, the council approved our source water protection plan, and as soon as they did that, the Source Water Protection Plan Development Advisory Committee dissolved, and the next step is for us to develop a forest stewardship plan, which will help us, tell us how we're gonna manage the Jetty Creek watershed, and so we need a community advisory committee to play a part in that, and so that's what this new committee's gonna do. And so we'll have, we'll have applications up probably by the end of the week. We'll accept applications for anybody interested in serving the committee, on that committee through July 7th, and it'll probably be about a six-month commitment. So if you're interested in, in being a part of the process to determine how we manage the Jetty Creek watershed, please, please do apply. Resolution 2034. All right, so recommends granting of a liquor license approval for Pelican Brewing Company, and they are looking for, they're requesting a full-on-premise commercial liquor license for what they're gonna call the Pelican Tap Room in Rockaway Beach. And if the council approves, recommends approval, it'll go to the liquor license, the OLCC, who ultimately issued the liquor license. It's nice to see, nice to see new businesses here in town. And I think this is the last resolution, Resolution 35, so appointing a grand marshal and volunteer of the year, and the council worked on this earlier tonight in their workshop. And so congratulations to Pat Olson, the 2025 grand marshal, and Barb Riley, the 2025 volunteer So our last meeting last month, we talked about some of those slurry seal projects Dan, Dan mentioned on South Anchor Street, North Miller, and North Third, and those are complete now. So I just want to show you some, some photos, some action photos of the project. So this is on North Miller Street, and you can see how they apply it. We got a lot of comments and questions about why are we paving these particular roads, and because they seem to be in okay condition. Well, and that's, that's the whole point. We're not paving these roads, we're putting a slurry seal on. And what that means is we can resurface roads that are in good condition at a fraction of the cost of pavement. And so we're able to maintain our roads in, in good shape through this slurry seal process. And they mix, I think it's sand and asphalt tar, and they spread it out over the road and smooth it out, and hopefully it'll extend the life of these roads, and it's much, much cheaper than paving, and we can focus our paving dollars where, where it's needed. So here's a shot of North Third Avenue. Same thing. And then Anchor Street, South Anchor Street, got a coating as well. So anyway, other response so far has been, people have been very happy about it, and that's good to hear, because if it's something that works for us, we can expand on this next year and increase the roads we're able to, we're able to treat. As far as the public meetings go, it, it, it looks, it looks a little lighter than usual for June and July, but just imagine we have the Fourth of July sandwiched in there, that's gonna be a big deal, and we might also have our first Forest Stewardship Plan Committee meeting sometime towards the end of, end of July as well. Fourth of July is coming up, we're accepting applications, and like I said, all hands on deck, getting ready for, for our biggest, biggest weekend of the year. That's it.
I just wanted to make, point out one thing that are, in July, our city council meeting will be the first one week because of Fourth of July, so people who are used to coming on the second Wednesday of the month, it will be the third Wednesday of the month.
Thanks for, thank you for pointing that out.
Be very quiet here if you show up the second Wednesday. We'll go past, we'll go past. Thank you, City Manager Shepherd. All right, we're gonna move into the public hearing section of our evening. Consideration to continue the public hearing on ordinance 2025-05 and 2025-06, updating the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan related to the flood hazard overlay zone to the next city council meeting on August 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. The court granted a 60-day stay in the proceedings of the case Oregonians for Flood Plane Protection versus FEMA. The city's legal counsel has recommended that the city continue the matter of the scheduled public hearing on our floodplain amendments until the case plays out. The chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council continue the public hearing on ordinance 2025-05 and 2025-06, updating the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan related to the flood hazard overlay zone to the city council meeting on August 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
I move to continue the public hearing on ordinance 2025-05 and 2025-06, updating the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan related to the flood hazard overlay zone to the city council meeting on August 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM.
I'll second it. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council continue the public hearing on ordinance 2025-05 and 2025-06, updating the zoning ordinance and comprehensive plan related to the flood hazard overlay zone to the city council meeting on August 20th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. Is there any discussion from council?
No, I, I think it is pretty obvious by now that we're just following the federal government's directions.
Any other discussion? Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Public hearing on ordinance 2025-02, 2025-03, 2025-04, updating the zoning code, subdivision code, and comprehensive plan related to middle housing. The Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to hold a public hearing to allow public input regarding proposed amendments to ordinances and the comprehensive plan that are necessary to meet state requirements for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. The city must take action to amend its development code and comprehensive plan policies by June 30th, 2025, as directed by Senate Bill 406. All documents have been available for inspection as required by the state statute. At this time, I open the public hearing. The purpose of this public hearing is to allow public input regarding proposed amendments to the Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and comprehensive plan related to middle housing that are necessary to meet state requirements for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters. I have a sign-up sheet for those who have requested to speak. As indicated on the sign-up sheet, if you wish to be notified of an appeal or other action on these proposed amendments, please provide your name and complete mailing address on the sign-up form, or provide it to the city recorder immediately following the meeting. If you do not provide your address, we may be unable to provide you with a copy of the final resolution. Please make sure your testimony is related to applicable criteria or other criteria that you believe apply to these amendments. Planning staff will identify those criteria at the beginning of the hearing. Testimony also should not be repetitious. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. If we think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next door, City Manager, will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited, please refrain from them. Comments from the audience will not be part of the record. I will begin the hearing by asking City Planner Mertz to present the staff report.
Thank you. Okay, so the Rockaway Beach, the city of Rockaway Beach is proposing to amend the Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and comprehensive plan. The amendments to the ordinance and comprehensive plan are necessary to meet state requirements for middle housing. The city must take action to amend its development code and comprehensive plan policies by June 30th, 2025, as directed by Senate Bill 406. The builder of cities and unincorporated communities within Tillamook County serviced by water and sewer permit all forms of middle housing, which include duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters in all zones where single-family dwellings are permitted, consistent with the state's adopted rules for middle housing in large Relevant criteria that apply to this request include the Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance, Article 9 amendments, Rockaway Beach comprehensive plan, the planning process, and Oregon statewide land use planning goals, 1 through 19. Notification was provided to the Department of Land Conservation and Development on March 13th, and notice that this public hearing was published online and through the Headlight Herald. Planning staff find that these amendments are consistent with the applicable comprehensive planning goals and policies, and that these amendments are required to meet land use Staff find that Goal 1, citizen involvement, has been met. The Rockaway Beach City Council, Planning Commission, and public were provided numerous opportunities to become aware and engaged in the process related to the required middle housing amendment, including work sessions, a town hall, a public hearing with the Planning Commission, and this hearing. Staff find that Goal 2, land use planning, has been met. The proposed amendments reflect due consideration of housing-related state laws and administrative rules, consistent with providing a factual basis for land use decisions. Staff find that Goal 10, housing, has been met. The amendment will allow for duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhouses, and cottage clusters in zones where single-family dwellings are permitted. These amendments are made at the direction of the state to make room for middle housing, to address the state's housing shortfall, and to meet public need. Staff find that Goal 10, public facilities and services, has been met. These amendments address the coordination for public facilities and services necessary to provide for middle housing within the urban growth boundary. In conclusion, staff support these amendments to the Rockaway Beach City zoning ordinance, subdivision ordinance, and comprehensive plan. These amendments were recommended for approval by the Rockaway Beach Planning Commission on April 17th, 2025. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for staff regarding the proposed amendments? Have we received any additional correspondence regarding the proposed amendments besides what was included in the staff report?
Has been received.
Next, we will receive public testimony. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral or written testimony or both, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. You must testify orally or in writing before the close of the public record to preserve your right to appeal the decision to the city council or the Land Use Board of Appeals, known as ALUBA. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. We will now begin public testimony with those wishing to speak in favor of the amendments. I have the sign-up sheet for those who have requested to speak. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment in support of the amendments can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the sign-up sheet. Do we have folks watching remotely for public comment in support of the amendments? We have neither folks remotely or in the room that have an interest in speaking in support of the amendment, so we will now receive public testimony from those wishing to speak in opposition to these amendments. He and I have the sign-up sheet for those who have requested to speak. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment in opposition to the proposed amendments can notify the city reporter by clicking the raise hand icon now, and we will add you to the sign-up sheet. Do we have any, any remote guests who wish to comment in opposition? All right, we have nobody in the meeting or remotely wishing to speak in opposition, so we'll now receive public testimony from those wishing to speak that are neutral or have questions about the proposed amendments. I have the sign-up sheet for those who have requested to speak. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comments that are neutral or has questions about this proposal can notify the city recorder by clicking the raise hand icon now, and we will add you to the sign-up sheet. Do we have remote guests who wish to comment? The chair recognizes Nancy Lanyon.
Please.
Please approach the podium, state your full name, and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After a few minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Thank you. Nancy Lanyon, a full-time resident in Rockaway Beach. I'm quite neutral, I'm very much in favor of the proposal. I want to thank the city and staff for all the work that has gone into this for clarification, even though it's being imposed upon all the municipalities, you still worked on it, you clarified for us, so I really appreciate that. I also thank you for changing all of the words "family" to "unit" in all of those different documents in order to be consistent. My request is, the part, it's on page eight of 27, subdivision and land partitioning ordinance, Section 14, Item 2, simply to change the word servants to staff. That's, I emailed to see if that might be possible, but servants I don't think is appropriate in this day and age, and it's, staff means the same thing, so, that's it, thank you very much.
Thank you. The council may now ask any further questions of staff. Does staff have any final comments?
Excuse me, thank you.
Okay, since there are no further comments, I will close the public hearing at this time. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has four minutes to speak. Our government law takes the input into consideration, however, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting laws, this isn't the time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city manager is taking notes of action as needed. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one minute warning by turning yellow. I have the sign up sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raised hand icon, and we will add you to the sign up sheet. Do we have folks watching remotely who wish to comment? The chair recognizes Robin Swain. Please approach the podium, state your full name, and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Robin Swain, one thirteen, South Mill, Rockaway Beach. And right now, I have my Rockaway Beach volunteer hat on and wanted to make everybody aware of volunteer opportunities as we go into what some call the summer season, we call festival season. June twenty fifth, we'll be hanging the red, white, and blue bunting on the businesses in town, starting at five thirty P M. And the next opportunity would be movies and music in the park every Thursday night, starting at June, on June twenty sixth. And of course, Fourth of July, we need a lot of volunteers for that one. And then in August, we have the Rockaway Beach Music Festival. Setup starts the fifteenth, and the festivals the sixteenth and seventeenth. Everything that we present out to the public is different entities' emails. Sandy Johnson and I were the co-coordinators for the R B Volunteers, putting in requests for volunteers, then we send an email out to the roster, which is well over seventy people at this point. And so this is how we start getting our list. We ask anybody that would like to volunteer to email us at r b volunteers one at gmail dot com. And the way we're set up is you can look at the different festivals, you can see what fits in to your physical abilities and your timeline to help, and we welcome everybody because that's what makes all of our festivals really great. And then there's several that I don't have listed, and that is with the Rockaway Beach Chamber of Commerce, and if you want to help with any of their festivals, please contact them. And again, r b volunteers one at gmail dot com. Get on the roster and help make this a fantastic festival. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Lydia Hess. Please approach the podium, state your full name, and indicate the city of your principal residence. You may indicate if you own property or a business within the city of Rockaway Beach. After three minutes, the timer will turn yellow. After four minutes, the timer will turn red, and then the floor drops out from under you. Please conclude your comments at that time.
Thank you. I am Lydia Hess, and I live full-time in Rockaway Beach. And I am here, I have my bike helmet on right now, and I am promoting our wonderful group of bicyclers that will be gathering together for Fourth of July parade. I wanted to invite everyone. Mary is also co-sort of. Creator, cheerleader for the Rockaway Bike Brigade, and the Salmonberry Trail is kind of a sponsor of this wonderful group. We had a great time last year, and we invite everyone to bring any kind of wheeled vehicle that is self-propelled and join us. There's flyers that you'll see going up around town. There's some notices about it on our different Facebook pages, and, and it'll just, just come with your bike, decorate it on the day of the parade, so.
Thank you. Well, thank you both for being engaged in our city government and our city in general and sharing your opinions and needs. It's exciting to have this kind of engagement. So we have no old business, because all we do is new business here at City Council. First and second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two, amending city of Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance one four three, code chapter one five five, related to middle housing. This proposed amendment was recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission after the first public hearing on April seventeenth, and we conducted the second public hearing this evening. This is now time for consideration to perform the first and second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two. The Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to consider performing the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two, amending city of Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance one four three, code chapter one five five, related to middle housing. By the city charter, the council may adopt an ordinance at a single meeting with the approval of at least three voting counselors, provided the proposed ordinance is available in writing to the public at least one week before the meeting. Any substantive amendment to a proposed ordinance must be read aloud or made available in writing to the public before the council adopts the ordinance at that meeting. All documents are available for inspection as required by city charter. The chair will now entertain a motion to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two.
I move to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance two oh two five dash oh two.
I second it.
Recorder requests to restate the motion to perform the first and second reading.
Okay, I move that we perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance two oh two five dash oh two.
I second that motion.
It is moved and seconded to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two. Is there any discussion from council? Since there is no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. I will now perform the first reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two, amending city of Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance one four three, code chapter one five five, related to middle housing, and followed with the second reading by title only of ordinance two zero two five dash zero two, amending city of Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance one four three, code chapter one five five, related to middle housing. The chair will now entertain a motion to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two.
I move to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance two oh two five dash zero two.
Second.
I second the motion.
It's moved and seconded to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance two zero two five dash zero two. Is there any discussion from council? Since there is no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two, amending city of Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance one four three, code chapter one five five, related to middle housing. With the first and second reading now complete, ordinance two zero two five dash zero two is ready for adoption. The chair will entertain a motion that, based on the facts and evaluations presented to the, in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city of Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two.
I move that, based on the facts and evaluations presented to the city staff, in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city of Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five oh two.
I'll second it.
It is moved and seconded that, based on the facts and evaluations presented in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city of Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero two. Is there any discussion from council? Since there is no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. First and second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three, amending city of Rockaway Beach subdivision ordinance related to middle housing. This proposed amendment was recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission after the first public hearing on April seventeenth, and we conducted the second public hearing this evening. This is now time for consideration to perform the first and second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three. The Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to consider performing the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three, amending city of Rockaway Beach subdivision ordinance related to middle housing. By city charter, the council may adopt an ordinance at a single meeting with the approval of at least three voting counselors, provided the proposed ordinance is available in writing to the public at least one week before the meeting. Any substantive amendment to a proposed ordinance must be read aloud or made available in writing to the public before the council adopts the ordinance at that meeting. All documents have been available for inspection as required by the city. The chair will now entertain a motion to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash three.
I make a motion that we perform the first and second reading of ord, by title only of ordinance, ordinance twenty twenty five oh three.
Second.
I second the motion.
It is moved and seconded to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three. Is there any discussion from council? Since there's no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. I will now perform the first reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three, amending city of Rockaway Beach subdivision ordinance related to middle housing, and followed by the second reading, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three, amending city of Rockaway Beach subdivision ordinance related to middle housing. The chair will now entertain a motion to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three.
I move to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three.
Second.
I'll second.
It is moved and seconded to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three. Is there any discussion from council? Since there is no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three, amending city of Rockaway Beach subdivision ordinance related to middle housing. With the first and second reading now complete, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three is ready for adoption. The chair will entertain a motion that, based on the facts and evaluations presented in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city of Rockaway Beach subdivision ordinance and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three.
I move that, based on the facts and evaluations presented to the city staff, in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city of Rockaway Beach subdivision ordinance and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five oh three.
I'll second it.
It is moved and seconded that, based on the facts and evaluations presented in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city of Rockaway Beach subdivision ordinance and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero three. Is there any discussion from council?
No, just to let everybody know, we have a few more of these. Sorry.
Okay, we are on page twenty one at forty five. We're making progress. Since there is no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. First and second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four, amending city of Rockaway Beach Comprehensive Plan related to middle housing. This proposed amendment was recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission after the first public hearing on April seventeenth, and we conducted the second public hearing this evening. This is now time for consideration to perform the first and second reading of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four. The Rockaway Beach City Council is now scheduled to consider performing the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four, amending city of Rockaway Beach Comprehensive Plan related to middle housing. By the city charter, the council may adopt an ordinance at a single meeting with the approval of at least three voting counselors, provided the proposed ordinance is available in writing to the public at least one week before the meeting. Any substantive amendment to a proposed ordinance must be read aloud or made available in writing to the public before the council adopts the ordinance at that meeting. All documents have been available for inspection as required by the city charter. The chair will now entertain a motion to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero.
I move to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four.
Second it.
It's moved and seconded to perform the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four. Is there any discussion from council? Since there's no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. I will now perform the first reading by title only, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four, amending city of Rockaway Beach Comprehensive Plan related to middle housing, followed by the second reading by title only, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four, amending city of Rockaway Beach Comprehensive Plan related to middle housing. The chair will now entertain a motion to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four.
I move to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four.
I second the motion.
It's moved and seconded to approve the first and second reading by title only of ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four. Is there any discussion from council? Since there's no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Consideration to adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four, amending city of Rockaway Beach Comprehensive Plan related to middle housing. With the first and second reading now complete, ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four is ready for adoption. The chair will entertain a motion that, based on the facts and evaluations presented to the city staff report, in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city Rockaway Beach Comprehensive Plan and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four.
I move that, based on the facts and evaluations presented in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city of Rockaway Beach Comprehensive Plan and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five oh four.
I'll second it.
It is moved and seconded that, based on the facts and evaluations presented in the city staff report and evidence presented, the Rockaway Beach City Council approved the amendments to the city of Rockaway Beach Comprehensive Plan and adopt ordinance twenty twenty five dash zero four. Is there any discussion from council? Since there's no discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Counselor Conrad.
Yes.
Counselor Martine.
Yes.
Counselor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty, reappointing members to the Planning Commission. The Rockaway Beach Charter, Chapter three, Section seven, authorizes the mayor, with the approval of a majority of the council, to make appointments to committees and council meeting rules and procedures, provide that the mayor may consider a reappointment of incumbents to the Planning Commission. Two Planning Commission members, Lydia Hess, who was appointed in January of this year, and newly appointed Penny Cole, are serving terms expiring on June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Person speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one minute warning by turning yellow. I have the sign up sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the face and icon, and we will add you to the sign up sheet. Do we have anybody remotely wishing to speak? We do not have anybody in the room or remotely wishing to comment, so the chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach Council approved. Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty, reappointing Lydia Hess and Penny Cole to the Planning Commission.
I move to approve Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty.
I'll second it.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution twenty twenty five dash thirty, reappointing Lydia Hess and Penny Cole to the Planning Commission. Is there any discussion from council?
No, just to point out that they just were appointed to fill vacancies. Like, I think Penny Cole's had one. Like, I think Penny Cole's had one meeting. So, and Lydia hasn't had, Hess hasn't had many more. So, this is really like a new start for them.
Any other comment or discussion? All right. Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conriff.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash thirty-one, approving the collective bargaining agreement with employees represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2734 dash one, AFSCME, Council Number Seventy-Five, AFL dash CIO. The collective bargaining agreement between the city and employees represented by AFSCME, Local 2734 dash one, Council Seventy-Five is for establishing wages, hours, and conditions of employment, and establishing an equitable and peaceful procedure for the resolution of differences between parties. The city's leadership and AFSCME bargaining teams have negotiated on limited and specific articles of the current agreement and reached a tentative agreement on a new four-year collective bargaining agreement for the period July 1st, 2025, to June 30th, 2029. The tentative agreement must be approved by the city council before it becomes effective. The public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the sign-up sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the sign-up sheet. Do we have anyone watching remotely? We have nobody here at the meeting or remotely wishing to comment, so the Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approves, Resolution 2025 dash thirty-one, approving the collective bargaining agreement with employees represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2734 dash one, AFSCME, Council Number Seventy-Five, AFL dash CIO.
I move to approve of Resolution 2025 dash thirty-one.
Second.
I second the motion.
It's moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025 dash thirty-one, approving the collective bargaining agreement with employees represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 2734 dash one, AFSCME, Council Number Seventy-Five, AFL dash CIO. Is there any discussion from council?
I want to thank the three AFSCME union employees of the city who were on the bargaining team and the two city staff members who were on it. They did an excellent job. I've seen a lot of bargaining, collective bargaining agreements, and this is one of the most solid I've seen. And we do want to take care of our employees. It's definitely, it's a public for everyone to see, and it's definitely something that I hope will keep our valuable employees around.
Thank you, Councillor McGinnis, for those comments. I think we have the best city employees of firstly, any other city that I have had any involvement with. I see them out working every day, day in, day out, sometimes during some very tough weather conditions, getting the job done. The folks in City Hall also here, day in, day out, taking care of business and moving our city forward. So, I'm very happy with this agreement and the salary around it, which is designed to reward them and keep them here working for us, which is my preference. Since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor, Councillor Conriff.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash thirty-two, approving awards for the 2025 facade improvement grant program. This resolution authorizes awards for the 2025 fiscal year facade improvement grants. This grant program is funded with lodging tax collected by the city and administered by the Tillamook Coast Visit Association. The council reviewed applications in the workshop and may now consider granting awards. During the workshop, we coalesced around granting to Troxels Rock Garden, $24,500, to Joe's Snacks and Beer, $19,250, Seaquest Treasures LLC, $28,689, Seabreeze, $30,000, Green Coast Market, $17,910, Peter Anderson Realty, $6,500, One Twenty Six LLC, $22,214, Sand Dollar Restaurant, $30,000, Old Oregon Smokehouse, $30,000. This grant program has already improved businesses in our community, and I'm very excited that we have nine businesses that we have granted awards to. We're going to see the difference that this makes. And then I'm hopeful the other four that we're sending back for further work will come back to council and we'll be able to up the number to thirteen. We do have the money in the budget to cover it, so it's not a budget issue at all. The public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. Electronic egg next to the city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the sign-up sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the sign-up sheet. Do we have anybody remotely? We have no one wishing to comment, so the Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025 dash thirty-two, approving awards for the 2025 facade improvement grant program.
I move that we approve Resolution 2025 dash thirty-two.
I'll second it. It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025 dash thirty-two, approving awards for the 2025 facade improvement grant program. Is there any discussion from council?
I want to thank all the businesses for applying. I went around and talked this last year because I was disappointed that so few people, businesses, applied last year. And I want to thank also our city staff because I got a lot of feedback from businesses that there were some barriers to applying, and our city staff worked through those barriers and made it easier. And this is the whole point, is that we can use this money to fix up our town. And also, I want to congratulate the people. I want to be one of the first people to do putt-putt golf on at Troxels. And also to say that the four that we're not voting on tonight just need some clarifications on their applications, and then they'll come back next month.
We made a change this year in the program, which I believe has, part of the reason we got more grants this year. Previously, it was a reimbursement-only grant, so you had to have money in the bank account to do the work, and then you got reimbursed. This year, Nan Devlin of the Tillamook Coast Visit Association graciously agreed to giving 50% of the money upfront, and then the remainder is reimbursement. And I think that's the right thing to do. It's about trusting our businesses to do the right thing and bringing improvement and better experiences for our visitors. So, thank you to City Manager Shepard and Nan Devlin for making that possible. Any further discussion?
No, I'm just so excited for this.
Well, let's vote. President, let's make it a reality. Let's vote.
Let's vote, so they can get their run in.
Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conriff.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash thirty-three, establishes Forest Management Plan Development Advisory Committee. This resolution establishes an advisory committee for the purpose of receiving and reviewing project information and providing community input to the forest stewardship plan facilitator during the development of the city's forest stewardship plan. Public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I have the sign-up sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raised hand icon. Do we have anyone remotely wishing to comment on 2025 thirty-three? All right. Since we have nobody wishing to make a comment, the Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025 dash thirty-three, establishing Forest Management Plan Development Advisory Committee.
I move to approve Resolution 2025 dash thirty-three.
I second the motion.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025 dash thirty-three, establishes Forest Management Plan Development Advisory Committee. Is there any discussion from council?
Now, this is a policy management Citizens Advisory Committee. It follows our mission or value here on this governing body to involve the community more in decision-making. This committee does not have to be intimidated because they don't need to have technical expertise. The city staff received a $70,000 grant for us to hire a consultant to walk the committee through the process. And then the actual management, we will hire a professional forestry company to actually do the managing. So, this committee is, like I said, it's a policy development committee, and it's a way of involving the committee directly in decision-making.
Any other discussion? All right. Let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conriff.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash thirty-four, recommending granting of liquor license approval for Pelican Brewing Company. This resolution approves recommending to OLCC that the application from Pelican Brewing Company for a new full-on premises commercial liquor license be granted. The public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and make their comments and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to our city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I do have the sign-up sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon. Do we have anyone watching remotely that wishes to comment? Since we have nobody wishing to comment, the Chair will entertain a motion that Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025 dash thirty-four, recommending granting of liquor license approval for Pelican Brewing Company.
I move to approve Resolution 2025 dash thirty-four.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, it is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025 dash thirty-four, recommending granting of liquor license approval for Pelican Brewing Company. Is there any discussion from council?
I'm just going to say I'm very excited to have the opportunity to have another business here, and I think Pelican has a really good following, and I think it's going to be really good for business year-round for us to welcome Pelican into Rockaway.
All right, since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Council President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conriff.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash... Yes, I do look forward to Bad Santa this Christmas. Bad Santa. Consideration of Resolution 2025 dash thirty-five, selecting the Volunteer of the Year and Grand Marshal for the 2025 Fourth of July Parade. Council reviewed nominees for the Volunteer of the Year and Grand Marshal for the 2025 Fourth of July Parade in the workshop. The council coalesced around Barb Riley for Volunteer of the Year and Pat Olson for Grand Marshal. The public comment period is in the central part of local government meetings. Persons speaking shall address their comments to the council as a whole and keep their comments to four minutes. The electronic egg next to the city manager will count down, giving speakers a one-minute warning by turning yellow. I do have the sign-up sheet. Anyone joining us remotely who wishes to provide comment can notify the meeting monitor now by clicking the raise hand icon, and we will add you to the sign-up sheet. Do we have anybody watching remotely who wishes to comment? We have nobody wishing to comment, so the Chair will entertain a motion that the Rockaway Beach City Council approve Resolution 2025 dash thirty-five, selecting Barb Riley as the 2025 Volunteer of the Year and selecting Pat Olson as the Grand Marshal for the 2025 Fourth of July Parade.
I move to approve Resolution 2025, selecting Barb Riley as the 2025 Volunteer of the Year and selecting Pat Olson as the Grand Marshal for the 2025 Fourth of July Parade.
Second.
I'll second.
It is moved and seconded that Rockaway Beach City Council approves Resolution 2025 dash thirty-five, selecting Barb Riley as the 2025 Volunteer of the Year and selecting Pat Olson as the Grand Marshal for the 2025 Fourth of July Parade. Is there any discussion from council?
Well, these two individuals received a lot of nominations. We put out, for those people who may be watching this on Zoom and don't know, we put nomination forms on the website, forms on the website, and both of these individuals were overwhelmingly nominated.
I just, I mean, I think it's so important to call this out because we have to have our volunteers, and, I mean, both of these people, even though Pat is the Grand Marshal, he was, I believe, also nominated for volunteer. And without volunteers in this community, we wouldn't have the community that we have. So everybody, I'm very grateful for everybody that was nominated, but I'm very grateful for these two also.
We made a good choice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I come from Portland, and you don't see volunteers like that in Portland.
And there was a lot of like, does this, and this, and this, and, you know, it wasn't like, they help here. It was, they help here, and here, and here, and here, and here, and that's huge.
All right, since there's no further discussion, let's vote. Councillor President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conriff.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. Don't have anything more? Oh. Okay, we do have council comments, so just relax. Let's move on to council comments. The chair recognizes Councillor President Cheek.
Well, I think we did a good job just now with Volunteer of the Year and two very worthy people that have really put years of work into helping this community be what it is now. Also, I'm really excited that we're getting close to having our fire truck here, and I can't wait to see it driving up, and I hope we have a great party.
We will. Anything else?
I've got something scribbled down, but I can't read it, so we'll just.
Thank you, Councillor President Cheek. Moving right along to Councillor Conriff.
I just want to say that I feel like this was a really positive workshop and meeting that we've had today. I mean, what other city do you get to award such a sizable grant to our community, to better our community, to better our beautiful town? But then also, in the same meeting, we're talking about how busy the town has been, we're electing or voting on the Grand Marshal, the volunteer, we're talking about new businesses. I just feel like this was such a positive and uplifting workshop and meeting, and that is why I joined city council, was for the good parts of this, and it's just been a very positive. It's been a very positive meeting headed into what I think is going to be a very positive and busy summer.
Thank you. Councillor Martine.
Yeah, I moved down here in '95 when I bought the hardware store in Rockaway, and I wish we would have had the grant program then, I could have really used it. Everything came out of my garage register.
Yeah, me too. Thank you. All right.
Well, I echo everything Councillor Conriff said. Kylie said it so eloquently about how positive everything is going in the community. And I've been focusing on rotating businesses every month, trying to draw some of our thousands of people who watch the Zoom meetings to come and frequent our businesses. And since we just gave a liquor license to Pelican Brewing Company, I thought I would highlight real quickly our culinary destination here in Rockaway. We, I think we can become known as a culinary destination. We have a selection of ethnic foods. The Sand Dollar has the amazing paprik, paprik? Somebody say it. I eat it all the time, and I can't say it. Paprikash soup from Eastern Europe, and they're the only restaurant on the edge of the ocean where you can sit and see what's going on. We have the Indian food cart that has many choices, Mexican food cart that still has $3 tacos, El Trio Local Mexican restaurant, a new Thai food cart, and a Hawaiian food cart coming in. We also have the traditional restaurants, Tiebreaker, where you can watch, I think, more than 15 TVs as you grab a hamburger. Lakeside Hideaway, which is literally, you can sit on the bank, in the restaurant, and basically on the bank of Lake Lidl. Old Oregon Smokehouse has fresh seafood. Rick's Roadhouse has a very strong local following, and there's new food carts coming in, like in South 101, one just came in and up at Sixth Street. If you're looking for something sweet, we have Seabreeze Ice Cream that also freshly makes fudge, Swiper's Ice Cream that boasts 60 flavors of saltwater taffy. Are you looking for an amazing breakfast? Grumpy's, despite the name, is a very friendly place and has breakfast until 2:00 plus other meals. Beach Bake Shop has fresh bakery goods and sandwiches. Do you want groceries to take back to your short-term rental or to make a sandwich on the beach? Green Coast Market is now as new and stands alone uniquely, as it has fresh local produce, milk, eggs, butter, and lots of organic snacks. Center Market is actually our miniature grocery store, and you can buy, surprisingly, a lot of things there. You can find specialty jelly, jams, and sauces, and organic coffee at Seaquest Treasures Mall, take back to your vacation rental. Joe's Snack Shop has coffee and hot chocolate and sandwiches waiting for you when you get off the beach. Some weekends, you can buy a $6 or $7 hot dog and drink and chips at the Lions Club at the Wayside. And of course, there's the Pronto Pub at the south end of town, and I hope I didn't forget anyone, but if so, I'll make it up next month. But please come to Rockaway. Like, if you want to go out to eat, I just gave you a list of options that are amazing. And I also want to highlight, not food, but a new art gallery is going in next to Green Coast Market, and that's our own Fire Captain Jeff Grace and his wife Deborah, and it's going to be a fine art gallery. Please, please come and check him out. And that's it.
Thank you. Perfect, thank you. Local, you've heard some of this before, but I'm going to pile it on. Local and regional entrepreneurs recognize Rockaway Beach as a place to plan a business. We expect to see a Pelican Tap Room open at the corner of South Second Avenue and South Miller Street within the next month. The Bay Ocean Food Court is open with two food trucks and more to come. Local Greg Gentry and his brother made this investment in Rockaway Beach. Deborah and Jeff Grace, AKA Captain Grace, are opening Blue Water Fine Art Gallery located next to Green Coast Market later this month. The Grace's mission is to showcase the talent and vision of local artists, celebrating creativity that captures the beauty and spirit of the Oregon coast. Thank you to all who are bringing new businesses to Rockaway Beach. Please support our businesses. Eat local, shop local. Next slide, please. Just a couple of thank yous. You may have noticed additional flowers, fewer weeds, and new woodchips at the post office. Sandy Johnson, Jill Elliott, Georgianne Zedrick, and Kathleen Lengel spent time in the morning of June 1st, making our post office look wonderful. Big shout out to all of them. I want to thank Nan Devlin of Tillamook Coast Visit Association. She brought Sea Legs Media to town. They were filming around town over Memorial Day weekend. A big shout out to Superintendent Dan Emerson and utility worker Logan Romig for bringing their families to Anchor Street Park to showcase our popular play structures in the filming. Also, thanks to Mary Mertz, who coordinates our David's Chair volunteers and reservations for highlighting our installation of the David's Chair at St. Mary's by the Sea. Sea Legs Media also filmed at the Rockaway Big Tree Boardwalk and the Wayside, among other areas. The film promoting our awesome community will be released in mid to late June. Just, and then I want to thank, and I've already done this earlier, but I'm going to do it again, I want to thank our hard-working, talented city leadership and staff for all they do to keep our community moving forward. If I am an effective mayor, if I'm an effective mayor, it is because of them and our city council, and I do genuinely appreciate what they do to lift me up and support me. Next slide, please. Well, back to volunteer opportunities. I think Robin, oh, she's standing there, you're going to get another dose of pitch for volunteers. We have exciting opportunities to make a difference in Rockaway Beach. Red, white, and blue bunting hanging on downtown buildings on June 25th, beginning at 5:30 p.m. Music and Movies in the Park Thursday evenings, beginning June 26th, except July 3rd through August. The Fourth of July Parade assistance on July 4th, Fourth of July Wiener Dog Races assistance, the Rockaway Beach Music Festival, the 15th, 16th, and 17th of August. Meals for Seniors, Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays. They can use volunteers. It can be a short amount of time, it can be a long amount of time, but one of our great services that we provide in the city. And then we're looking for more people with our emergency management teams, whether it's preparedness, the CERT program, or the radio group. Volunteering offers significant personal and community benefits, so email rbvolunteercoordinators@rbvolunteers1@gmail.com and sign up for one or more of these community-building events. Next slide, please. We held our monthly Coffee with the Manager/Mayor on Thursday, May 22nd. We included a summary of the comments shared in the meeting packet for council and community members to review and consider. The next Coffee with the Manager/Mayor is Wednesday, June 18th, as City Hall is closed on Thursday for Juneteenth Day. We hope you will attend, as it is an opportunity to meet your neighbors and share your thoughts on Rockaway Beach with City Manager Shepherd and me. You can go on record with what's important to you and what you want to see the city do. And then my last slide, if you have ideas to share, questions, concerns about what's going on in the city of Rockaway Beach, or what you are hearing or seeing on social media, please email me at cmcneely@corb.us. I would welcome the opportunity to meet with you. Thanks for your time and attention this evening. I'm still listening, and I'm also still waving when I walk around town. With that, I will have a motion to adjourn our meeting. Vote to adjourn. Second.
I second it.
It's moved and seconded. Let's vote. Councillor President Cheek.
Yes.
Councillor Conriff.
Yes.
Councillor Martine.
Yes.
Councillor McGinnis.
Yes.
We are adjourned at 7:35 on Wednesday, June 11th, 2025.